The meeting is called to order at 7:02. Please rise and join me reciting the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor?
I want to amend the agenda.
We want to amend it first, right?
Sue the first amendment.
Oh, approve it first, amend it?
Yeah.
All right, so...
I make a motion to amend the agenda to address new business after community comments. So move it up if you can earlier.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved and amended. We need a motion for approval of open session minutes of June 18, 2018.
Motion to approve session minutes for June 2018.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, edits? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, okay. The session minutes of June 18 are approved. Next is community comments. Do we have community comments from anyone of us, which has to be heard? Seeing no one, we shall move on to new business. Our first order of business will be the approval of the NIPBOK World Language Field Trip to Italy in April 2020. Maria Riordan is here to present.
Good evening, Kate.
Hi, how are you doing, Rebecca?
Well, how are you?
I don't know, I didn't know Rebecca was here. So you have, in fact, well, this is old news by this point, we're talking about 2020, so next April vacation. It's the standard Italy trip that we've done for the last 10 years. The only thing I've added in is a cooking class, trying to just add tidbits of little things that I think make it different each year. But the price is on point, as what it's been the last few years, it's April vacation. We're here really early to get the kids the best price possible, so $200 off. And it does say until the end, till October, but it'll get pushed till at least the end of October, early November. So I'll be with Joe in Spain, so I'm trying to get this done before we leave.
I wonder if you have any questions?
I like a cooking class. Good idea.
Yes, I know. I know, it's hard to add too much without the price skyrocketing. And it's already a jam-packed trip for people who have gone on it, so this is really the only thing I could have added in.
Looks like fun.
Just a word of appreciation, Kate's run trips across all over the map. And I think you see the popularity of her with the kids, not only because they have a good time, but especially with the Italian trip, it's such a more practical way to use the skills that they're learning in class and put them to life and put them to work in a real-life setting. And we just have a ton of trust with her, watching the kids, and give them a great experience.
All right, we ready for the questions? We need a motion to approve the Italy trip 2020.
I make a motion to approve the Italy trip of 2020.
Second.
You very much, and thank you for bumping me up on the agenda.
All right, so are there any questions or discussion further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. The trip is unanimously approved. Okay, our next order of business is presentation and approval of the new Mersey Strategic Plan Inspire.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'd like to thank the committee, Sean, Diane, and also a lot of the members of the Strategic Planning Committee that are here this evening. It was a fairly rigorous process, but I think we got it right in creating a brand-new five-year strategic plan that I think is a very bold vision for our district moving forward. What I've done is I've invited Dr. Kathy Cummins, who is the Executive Director of the Assabit Valley Collaborative, and she also served as our facilitator, to just kind of say first and foremost a few words about the actual process. And then what I'm going to do at a very, very high level, and I'll reference back to the actual plan, go over some of the major tenets. And then if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. So Kathy.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and thank you to Dr. Mary Schechter for engaging me in this work. I'm really excited to work with this team. I've been told that expedience is very important to this committee, so the most important part of what you have to review is in the document that you have in front of you, Inspire. But I did want to tell you a little bit about how we worked on the facilitation. We started together in March, I joined the team starting in March. I knew that there was a lot of legwork done ahead of time in terms of gathering resources that were important to the district around 21st century learning, thinking about the future of learning, and really transforming education. We started all together on March 19. We started with an icebreaker, we tried to have fun as much as possible to try to get our neural pathways working. Fun is a great stimulator for dopamine in the brain. We started with an icebreaker around future jobs and what's changed in terms of jobs. We moved into really focusing on portrait of a graduate. So we utilized a lot of resources from the Planning for Success materials at the Department of Education. I was trained as facilitator through that program at the department, which was really great. But some of the pieces that were missing, we filled in some of those gaps, and one of those was Patel's Portrait of a Graduate. We did spend a majority of our time, especially upfront, really focusing on what are the competencies, what are the core competencies that we want to see our graduates leave us, leave the district with, as well as what does that look like growing up through the system. We also took some time to add some design thinking, so we did spend a session looking at developing student personas and thinking about all the different ways and personalities and types of students that we serve, so we can keep those in mind as we move forward with our strategic plan. And then we used some traditional strategic planning protocols, like the SWOT analysis, and a lot of visioning, using the Back to the Future Protocol. In spirit with the district's huge priority on student agency, we did, there were students on the strategic planning team, which was fantastic. We also had the opportunity, I had, you know, one of the highlights of my year was facilitating focus groups with students at both Misco and at the high school, and also parent focus groups, where we used the same visioning protocols. And what was really exciting to see kind of develop over time is how in line and how much consistency there were in terms of values and desires for the district moving forward across those focus groups. We did some protocols around data, used a notice and wonder protocol to look at data sets that the administrative team provided to the group. And then from there, we identified some challenges or problems that we wanted to tackle in the strategic plan. And from that, vision, mission, and strategic, core strategic objectives, as well as the development of, I think... Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three strategic initiatives, which the leadership team's been busy working on this summer, calling those down, prioritizing what's the most important to focus on first, and then... Any questions? How'd I do, was that a minute?
That was stellar. That was absolutely stellar. So, thank you very much, and thank you for your facilitation through the process. What I'd like to do this evening is just kind of go over a high-level overview of some of the major tenets. And I think, like any plan and any vision, it really starts about what your core beliefs about learning are actually all about. And after a lot of processing of all the data and looking at a lot of the work that happened last school year, district-wide and also within each of the four schools, the committee came up with five core beliefs that fall in line with the notion that we believe that learning happens most powerfully and deeply when we establish relationships that create a safe, inclusive, and supportive environment, when we are active, creative, purposeful, and reflective, when we nurture curiosity, discover interests, and pursue passions, again, that whole piece around student agency, when we engage in authentic experiences and create products that have meaning and relevance via the classroom, again, that piece around authentic learning. And then last but not least, something that I feel very, very passionately about always being a core value through meaningful collaboration among students, educators, families, and the larger community. As Kathy alluded to, something that was different in this process versus previous strategic planning process was this whole notion of developing a portrait of a graduate profile. And the rationale behind it is to kind of plan backwards, to say, okay, for our kids that we have in front of us right now, K through 12, pre-K through 12, what are the essential skills necessary for kids to be successful in a modern context in a rapidly changing, increasingly diverse, interconnected world? I think it's refreshing, and I know we've had conversations at this school, at the school committee level, I know Diane, you've brought this up as well. The rationale behind it is, let's come up with a new metric of measuring proficiency and competency other than just standardized tests. So really, in fully implementing a Portrait of a Graduate system, you really should be planning K through 12, but establishing benchmarks along key grade levels for all of these competencies. So the competencies that the core planning team came to consensus to are these six. And if you look in the actual document, you see an explanation on page eight, but then on page nine, kind of a more drilled-down definition of each of the competencies in detail. And the six are, first, we want all of our students to be global citizens, and we view that in the context of larger, having a larger global perspective. And then I would say a global G, with a little g, of understanding diversity and understanding diversity of opinion even within their own context of their own community. Then the second one being, we want all of our students to be solution seekers, really kind of speaking to the whole issue of higher-order thinking, critical thinking, analysis, and so on, on real, key, authentic problems. Then the third one being a skillful collaborator, our students being able to work effectively with a diverse group of people and working in a team setting and demonstrating flexibility. The whole notion of being an inspired innovator, that is, somebody who very much views failure as part of the pathway to success, somebody who uses a wide range of strategies that are creative in nature to solve problems, somebody who incorporates feedback and reflection in all of their work on a regular basis. Then another one, that competency that people on the team felt very passionately about was the whole notion of being a mindful learner. And this is really kind of speaking to social-emotional learning and kind of speaking to teaching the whole child. I love the first bullet point in the explanation, plain and simple. We want every single one of our students to have a growth mindset, to have a growth mindset in everything that they approach throughout their 13 years with us. But also, along with that SEL piece, comes the whole notion of recognizing emotions, regulating emotions, and making consistently good choices. And then last but not least is the whole competency around effective communication, communicating for a range of purposes to a variety of audiences and effectively communicating orally, written, and also non-verbally. So those are really the core competencies. And moving forward, this is going to be a good chunk of our work over the next five years, establishing key benchmarks, key assessments across all of our grade levels that really speak to proficiency in each of these. So another piece, and after the team developed the Portrait of a Graduate, was really defining what is our mission, what are we all about, what is our stated purpose for what we do each and every single day with our kids? And we came up with something that was very, very simple, very short, very succinct, but in my opinion, very hard-hitting. And it's plain and simple, we empower all learners to thrive. Now, you might be saying to yourself, okay, what exactly is thrive? I think very intentionally, we kept it broad, because a lot of the conversations were around thriving, period, thriving academically, thriving socially, thriving emotionally, and so on. So it's intentionally broad, because it's a recognition of speaking to the whole child and the many needs and teachings of the whole child. Closely tied to that is our vision, which is forward-looking. And we kind of framed it with a direct correlation to our vision, to our mission, rather, where we're saying, in order to bring our mission to life, so for all of our kids to be thriving, this is what we need to do in our district. We need to create programs, practices, partnerships that value the whole child. We need to lead innovation. We need to inspire meaningful learning that ignites individual passions. We need to reimagine education to align with those five beliefs, those five core beliefs about learning. We need to leverage technology to communicate, collaborate, and innovate. And we need to, and this is something, again, that we spoke at length about at the school committee level, we need to expand our definition of success beyond just traditional metrics, to celebrate talents, interests, accomplishments, and the growth of the learner. So kind of looking at a more broad spectrum of really defining what exactly success is. So very similar to our current strategic plan, as far as the structure that we have, in looking at the actual nitty-gritty of the work that we'll have over the next five years, there's strategic objectives and there's strategic initiatives. The leadership team looked very, very carefully at what should our big rock be? After doing both, like Kathy said, a SWOT analysis and looking at all of the data as far as what our various stakeholders were saying, what our priorities should be, it really kind of came down to these four overarching goals, four strategic objectives. One, engaging our community as true partners in learning. And that really kind of speaks to finding new partnerships, finding new possibilities for our students, but also keeping the ongoing conversation with all of our stakeholders about what our kids really need. Two, the second one is very explicit around SEL. We will support social-emotional learning, so our schools are safe, healthy, and balanced learning environment. The issue of balance, time and again, throughout the strategic planning process, came up again, that a strong feeling of where we've been with standards, high-stakes testing, and at times punitive accountability systems, we've gotten a little out of whack. We've gotten out of whack with regard to our time and our priorities, and as a result, it resulted in a lot of stress by both our students and adults. So that kind of speaks to that. Third, we will redefine and reimagine school to empower learning for a modern context. I see this as kind of our boldest goal in the sense that it's acknowledging that a lot of our structures that we have in place in our schools are quite frankly of a bygone era, that we still are doing many, many things in our schools that are the direct byproduct of the industrial era. So this objective seeks to do things differently, seeks to create new structures and new pathways for learning. And then last but not least, which I think is also very broad, but also very powerful, we will align our professional practices with our stated beliefs about learning. I think one of the key things is, you can take a look at those five beliefs about learning. And I was just having a conversation an hour ago with John and Mary Ann about our five beliefs. And if you look at them at face value, if I go back to them, there really is much that you can argue with there. You know, I kind of facetiously said, looking at them, they're like motherhood and apple pie. I mean, how can you disagree with them? But I think the rubber hits the road when you start to define them and you start to come up with a common vocabulary about things like authentic experiences. What does that actually mean? What does that mean to a junior at NIPBOK High School? What does that need to a fourth grader at Memorial Elementary School? Really defining them and coming up with common understandings. What does meaningful collaboration really mean with our families, with our community? So I think a key of the, a crux of the work moving forward will be, district-wide, coming up with a common vocabulary of what these things actually mean in practice, and then all of us individually and collectively assessing where are we with regard to our current practices, our current structures versus what our understandings of what those beliefs should be. And of the gap, what do we do to close that gap? So that's going to be a key piece of our work moving forward. So I would invite you, without, as Kathy alluded to, if you look on pages 11 and 12 of the actual document, are the listed strategic initiatives. And by strategic initiative, we're talking about a project, focused work in our schools that are probably, are multiple years in duration, it could be a year, it could be two or three years, that kind of speak to each of the strategic objectives. So if you look at what's in blue, engaging the community as partners in learning, you see the initiative there, improving school and classroom communication with our families, things like developing more in the way of internships, job shadowing, and service learning, things like creating cross-grade and cross-school connections for learning, you know, when we have relationships, you know, say, high school students working with middle school students or elementary school students and so on. You also see in the similar fashion right below, the initiatives under supporting SEL. And one of the pieces there, and I'll talk about it a little bit more, you notice the third bullet point down, Planning for Safety, Crisis, and Resiliency. So a lot of our work that's real critical is around safety planning. And I see that safety planning, yes, definitely has physical aspects to it as far as the actual physical security of our buildings, but also the SEL piece, which goes hand in glove with that. If you look on the next page, around redefining and reimagining schools, here you're really talking about what are we doing to create more project-based learning for our students? What do we do to, think outside of the box with regard to homework practices? Maureen will be reporting out very shortly about the work that commenced last school year of a district-wide homework committee. What are the next steps in that type of process? Global education, building more global connections for our students, more connections so they have under more perspectives from their peers across the globe. So more work in that area. And then last but not least, that fourth strategic objective, aligning our practices to our beliefs around learning. Here we have some very specific initiatives around things like building student agency, the whole piece around being more explicit around developing new tools, they might be in the form of surveys, to measure satisfaction of our parents, of our students, of all of our stakeholders, and again, more of that integration of project-based learning across all content areas. Another component of the plan that is a little bit different than we've had in previous plans is something that we define as innovative elements. So I see these as really the themes of the plan that are embedded across everything. They're embedded across our beliefs, they're embedded across our objectives and initiatives, and so on. And I also see these, quite frankly, as the non-negotiables in our district moving forward. So what does it mean? And if you look on page 13, there's kind of a descriptor for each of these elements. But it's really about, first, the culture that we create, the quality of relationships that we have with our students and with their families, the whole notion of student agency that we've talked about, students having choice in what they're learning and being able to pursue their passions. The whole piece around technology, that we're using technology in a smart and purposeful manner in order to amplify learning, not just using technology for the sake of using technology. The whole notion of authentic work that matters, that is, that students doing things that are real, projects that are grounded in reality, that have real outcomes, real meaning. Then the whole notion of feedback and reflection, that we're giving our students high-quality feedback on their work, and we're promoting reflection in our students, but equally, as educators, we're being reflective in our own practices. And then last but not least, which I see as really kind of the most bold and the most outside of the box, is the whole notion of flexible learning environments, that with the continued growth and perpetuation of technology, what are some of the possibilities that we can explore, both in and outside of the classroom, and thinking outside of the box of how we deliver instruction? So that's kind of a very, very quick, high-level view of the major tenets of this plan. As far as the next steps, right now, you have in front of you just, again, the structure of the strategic plan, as you know, as a committee each year. Usually in September, we bring forward specific action plans for each year. So this is a five-year plan to sustain our district over the next five years. We will have specific 2018, 2019 action plans for the next school committee meeting. Our plan is, of those 23, very ambitiously, we're taking on seven strategic initiatives that we feel like are, really, really need to be our key focus, but also a lot of these are focused around work that's already happening within the district. So first and foremost, the initiative around providing tiered social-emotional learning supports and interventions, teaching and modeling core SEL competencies, maker education and product-oriented learning, developing interdisciplinary and project-based experiences, safety, crisis, and resiliency planning, redesigning use of space and time in learning environments, and last but not least, and again, I think I say this every year, I see this as a perpetual initiative to be working on, improving school and classroom communication with our families. I think like anything, we have a lot of work ahead of us, at least definitely between now and end of the year, to communicate this plan to all of our stakeholders, to give it the publicity that it virtually deserves. I intend on, once this has been approved... I intend on, once this has been approved, ensuring that all of our parents know exactly what this plan is. We have a professional development day tomorrow here at the high school district-wide that's dedicated to nothing but this strategic plan. And kind of our professional staff doing some deep inquiry around these terms to start the process of coming up with those common definitions. And as we do every year, kind of having checkpoints of halfway point and then it's end of the year of how we're progressing on the plan and how we're meeting those specific action plans and the benchmarks that are put up there each year. So in a relatively short period of time, that's kind of the high-level view of the plan. I'd be more than happy if you have any thoughts or any questions to take them right now.
So I think the work and everything that's gone into this is outstanding. I think it's created a great framework. I guess the question, the overarching question I have is, how do we measure success? What is success? You know, in what's here, I understand the graduate, but how do you somehow solidify that success in these initiatives we're going to have there and what we invest against?
I think it comes down to what you're crafting on an annual basis for your action plans. I think you get into a much higher degree of specificity in measuring that success when you're coming up with specific action plan steps, benchmarks. And you'll see this year, when we bring them before you and we'll share it before the meeting, we've intentionally changed our action plan matrix from what we've been using over the last five years. We have a much higher degree of specificity and actually a column that details specific metrics for success. So I think on a micro level, we'll be able to track it a little bit more carefully than we've done. I think on a macro level though, I think you have to step back on an annual basis and kind of assess what initiatives are working, how do we need to tweak them? Do we need to completely eliminate them, come up with something new? Realize, you know, I think Kathy kind of alluded to it, you know, half-seriously, half-facetiously, that we only have 23 strategic initiatives. We've got some people in this room that were part of our last strategic planning process. We came up with a total of 38 last time. That was just kind of nuts, quite frankly. It was just way too ambitious. So we tried to come up with a granular size that made sense for this process. So I think like anything, it is, it's a work in progress, it'll remain to be a work in progress. In my comments to the staff this morning, I said, realize that this is a journey, this isn't a series of events, it isn't just kind of a check off the box, it's been done. Because I think the ideas in here, the places that we've, proverbially speaking, planted our stake in the ground, are definitely the right agenda.
No, I would definitely agree with that. It's just really a question of understanding kind of where we think some of these items will take us and how long it will take us to get there. Because I can see some of these items clearly are the right, clearly the right focus area. It's just a question of, it's probably going to take us more than a single year to get there.
Oh, absolutely.
And so just being able to clarify what is progress and what is kind of evolution in those areas will be critically important, just making sure we're able to invest against the right things. Because as we, you know, as you mentioned in the last strategic planning process, we had 30-plus different initiatives, we didn't do them all at once.
No.
We invested in different ones at different levels from the start. And so just making sure we've kind of picked the right items that we think are going to be critical moving forward is going to be very important. And also making sure we're making progress against them will be critical.
Agreed.
Just to piggyback a little bit on that, I think that our objectives are, we're going into a different realm when we're talking about social-emotional. It's kind of been a focus the last few years anyways, but now it's very concretely in our plan. And the way you, the way you assess academic success is very different than the way you may address and try to assess emotional success. But I think that is a really important point that you make, Phil, because not only do we know how, need to know how to break down each of the objectives, but we need to know how to assess our own success against those objectives as well. And I know from a social, social-emotional point, we're talking a lot about the kids and the focus is really on the kids and how are they doing? And we're also talking about connections with teachers. And are we establishing these really solid, supportive, safe connections with teachers? There's not, there's not really a metric that we've used beyond the K-12 insight survey, which is only provided annually, if that, and the Metro West Behavioral Health Study. Like, I know we've talked about push surveys, but I feel like these are the types of things that you don't wait a full year to say, hey, how are you feeling in your classroom with your teacher?
Correct.
I feel like it needs to happen much more frequently so that if a teacher needs to make adaptations for either individual kids or an entire classroom, we need to have that feedback to be able to make those changes. Because for me, and I've always stressed this, I feel like academic success hinges on social-emotional success. So it's just kind of my two cents.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I mean, I think, very optimistically, to go back to your point, Diane, about SEL being such a major focus of this plan, we're very, very explicit about it in this plan. And if you go back to forward, the plan that literally ended, I guess, Sunday, we could say, there isn't a single mention of it. You know, and maybe there's an assumption that we're providing SEL support to kids, but I think we're in a different, even though it's only a five-year span, it's a little bit different today than it was back in 2012, 2013. But I feel very, very good about this in that we're being so explicit about it in this plan. We really are.
And I love that. Like, you know how important the social-emotional piece is, but it even goes beyond that. Now, we're starting to talk about collaboration within the community. How are we going to gauge our success on that, too? I think there needs to be very specific things in place to say, hey, how are we doing on this? And I don't think they need to be annual, I think they need to be a little bit more frequent, because it gives us a chance to adapt. Like, hey, we're not hitting this as much as I feel like we should. So we have an opportunity to say, okay, we need to put a little bit more focus in this area.
See, I think that touches, that touches a little bit on my reaction to this, because I go back to what you said on the slide where you said it's all, you know, pie and apple, apple pie.
Oh, motherhood and apple pie.
Motherhood and apple pie. When you read the plan, you see very idealistic objectives put in. And it's, if you're new to it, it looks like an overload of idealistic objectives, right? It would be helpful for communication, because I think that communication is actually more important than each initiative that we've got written. If we don't communicate what we're doing and how we're doing it, how things are improving, communicating metrics, absolutely. But having some sort of communication plan where we can cover threads through the strategy to show how that is an impact. In fact, something like a before and after. Here's what we were before, here's where we're going, and here's where we are right now. So it gives people a perspective, not just of the ideal goal, which is wonderful, but how we're making progress along. So we say, we had a problem before, we were structuring our classwork to be heavy on homework, to be, you know, to be, fulfill the objectives of rigor, and try to, you know, make sure our kids can be prepared for lots and lots of work, and basically burying their curiosity in the meantime. If we say, that's the way we were, but look at how much our kids have improved in the way they learn, and the curiosity they have, the innovation that they have, because of the steps we've taken, that's a very powerful statement. So it's something we need to, really important that we do that over the next five years. Agreed?
And that's one of our objectives, is to improve communication. So it fits right in.
It's just, you know, we've been through, I've been through strategic planning at corporate locations, and the strategy, the strategy always adapts to what the conditions are each year. And I think you were touching on that.
Unfortunately, yeah.
And many times, that's just the reality. But communication, if it's not done, destroys the whole strategy. So I just think the communication with the community, building partnership there, that's the most important thing, and being able to give them an understanding of where we're headed as a district.
Agreed.
All right, any other comments?
So I guess the question is, when will we see the first action plan?
September 10th.
Okay.
At our next meeting on September 10th. I intentionally, they are, I would say, 95% complete right now, but I intentionally did not include them with this, because I kind of wanted this to stand out itself.
No, I mean, it's great work. It really is. I think it'll be important to see the details that are behind these initiatives and kind of how we define what they are. So, because to your point, if somebody picks this up for the first time they read it, it's a lot of motherhood and apple pie.
It is.
It is. What is it going to really look like and how is it going to be a change from what we've done in the past?
And I know it's not that simple to really define that clearly, because we're constantly evolving. But I don't know if there were, I'll call it targets, or examples that were out there that kind of drove kind of where this ended up and kind of, whether it's the portrait of a graduate, or it's these kind of categorizations of different strategic objectives. I don't know if there was something we used, or it's just kind of, it's just kind of...
If you, if you look at the appendices, as far as the resources of different, first off, data points that we used, and, you know, we discussed the K-12 insight, we discussed using student assessment data, but then also a lot of qualitative data. You know, for example, the focus groups that were done with our parents, that are done with students, and so on. So a lot of those data points really were kind of the drivers of thinking about specific initiatives and places where we needed to go. And then if you also look at Appendix A, which is different books, different articles and resources and so on, those were also powerful drivers, looking at the vision of where we need to move as well.
Okay, any further comments or questions? All right. So I'd like to thank everyone who had a hand in producing this. I think this is a very comprehensive strategic plan, and to our parents, to our students, to our committee members, and every, you know, staff members, everybody who had a hand in this. This was very exacting, but very well thought out. And I think we're going to see many positive changes in the district using this as a basis. All right. That being said, we need a motion for approval of Inspire our Men and Upland Regional School District's strategic plan for 2018 to 2023.
Motion to approve Inspire our strategic plan for 2018 to 2023.
Second. Okay. It's been moved in second. Any further comments, questions, or information needed? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Hearing none, the strategic plan passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is the Nipmuck Regional High School Administration Structure Discussion.
Okay. I'd, I'd like to call John and Mary Ann upfront. And I'd like to bring something before the committee this evening that I think is rather unique. I think it's creative, I think it's outside of the box and innovative in how we do business. And specifically, it's changing the admin structure here at the high school so that John and Mary Ann would serve as co-principals, rather than a traditional structure that we've had in place for the past several years, where John is principal and Mary Ann is associate principal. I want to say upfront that I support this enthusiastically for the simple reason of the two individuals that we're dealing with. I think both John and Mary Ann are remarkably talented, gifted administrators as leaders, but more importantly, as people. They have incredible character, incredible integrity. And I think we're very fortunate, quite frankly, that we have this level of talent internally in our own leadership team. If you look at our neighboring districts, and quite frankly, across the state, you look at things like the high school principalship or the superintendency, and there's remarkable turnover. The average shelf life for a superintendent I know is about four years for a suburban superintendent, and I think it's just about the same for a high school principal. So I see this as a move that promotes stability. We're talking about John and Mary Ann who have spent, I know John, correct me if I'm wrong, your entire career at Nipmuck Regional High School, and Mary Ann, I think all but maybe one year?
Four years.
Okay, that's close, at Nipmuck Regional High School. They're people that are deeply invested in our community, they're deeply invested in the district, and in Nipmuck. So I think for the perspective of stability and keeping both of them in the fold is extremely important. But I also have to be very, very honest, we've been together as a team now for over seven years, for all intents and purposes, they have been co-principaling. I know that John treats Mary Ann as completely a co-equal in all leadership, all major decision-making, all significant operations of the school community. So I have support, and I will say explicitly, I support this initiative, and I do realize that a co-principalship is something that is outside of the box and is not traditional. But I support it for the simple reason of the two people that you have before you tonight, that in my opinion are an extraordinary team, and they work extremely well with each other. Keep in mind, as I say in the background notes, we are not looking to add any administrative personnel. As a matter of fact, John would be taking over some management responsibilities that Mary Ann presently has in her job description. So I've probably been a little bit long-winded, but I felt it was important to kind of establish a foundation of some of the mindset and thinking behind it. So I'll turn it over to you, Ted.
Thank you, Joe. And if you wouldn't mind putting that presentation up, and that was for the clicker, the flash drive I gave you. Thank you for that, for those comments sincerely, and thank you for the chance to talk about this today. I don't think there could have been a better introduction to the reason why we're seeking this than the discussion of the strategic plan. When you look at the initiatives and the work that's being undertaken in this district, I truly believe this is a special place. It's a school in a district that are doing, that's doing uncommon work. I'm exceptionally proud of it. I will tell you right upfront that I do not think that our work is done by any stretch of the imagination, but we have the chance to lead a really talented faculty that has a growth mindset, that has been walking with us on a journey to really reconsider what school can do for kids. This is a school that, I think, seven years ago, we worked really hard to build the academic profile back, expand AP programming, get our test scores where they needed to be, and reestablish the faith in the community. And since that time, we've been working to focus on just what our strategic plan is, that idea of inspiring kids and finding their passions, while also understanding that achievement is an important thing that we need to guarantee for our students. So when I think about that, where we are as a district, I can tell you that I am so excited about this work that this is where I want to be. that this is where I want to be in a year, this is where I want to be in five years, this is where I want to be in a decade. And so I spend a lot of my time in the mindset of, if we are going to grow, if we're gonna get better, if we're gonna continue on this path of continuous improvement, what's, what do we need to do in order to get there? And I have thought about this with teachers and with Mary Ann and with colleagues, some of whom are here tonight, and had a chance to talk about it with our leadership team. And I know that a key factor in our growth and our continued growth as a district is having Mary Ann's leadership. Mary Ann is a phenomenal instructional leader. She offers professional development. She's a teacher at heart who has been able to help not only our students, but our faculty members grow. She is a management machine and makes everything she touches a little bit more efficient, but not just through her process. I think she empowers people to make their own efficiencies and productivity. And she has such a great heart in leaving this school, connecting with kids, connecting with parents and family members. Joe, if you can just plug that flash drive on the right side.
It's in over there.
Is this the wrong?
No, we tested it.
Okay, you're good.
Okay, good deal. Her capacity is unmatched, and so in thinking about that, I think also in my role as a leader of this building, if we want to grow, and if Mary Ann is an integral part of that, then I have the responsibility to create enough space with which she can grow, with which she can take some of the other responsibilities off her plate. And while she has been partnering with me in all aspects of school leadership over the course of our seven years as a team, there is more that she can do if I enable that, and I think embracing this model of shared leadership further increases the capacity of the school. She's had a chance to be recognized not only at the state level, but her contributions on committees, and I know she gets a phone call probably two or three times a week from other associate principals, assistant principals who are looking for support, been established in her own way. I think we have different strengths that complement each other, and over time, I think this is a model that will continue to help us out. I included this quote in the presentation from one of our students, a graduate from last year, and I think it captures kind of the essence of where we're at. We're trying new things. We don't have all the answers, but we're having some successes and we're learning from our failures. And I think that is the journey to inspire. That is really what this next strategic plan is gonna be all about. And I sit on my hands as I listen to you talk about some of the new metrics and how we measure success. I think about the idea of the blue-sky thinking of the motherhood and apple pie. I think with Mary Ann's partnership, it's where the rubber hits the road. And I think we were able to show that over the course of the last strategic plan, where we can take some of these blue-sky thinking initiatives and turn them into actionable steps for our school community. Not that we're doing them alone, doing them as part of a team of teachers, but a team of teachers who are working with us and trying new things with us and learning and working together as part of this journey. So what we wanted to do quickly, I know it's warm in here, so I'll try to go a little more quickly. I wanted to highlight some of the ways that our partnership has shown up already and then talk about what's the value added of this model and how does it support our growth. The last strategic plan forward, I think appropriately named, was about, at the heart of it, was about competitive advantage in innovation. And as Joe said, turning the ship around. I remember in his first meeting, he talked about, it takes a little while to turn a cruise ship around, but we can do it together with a clear vision and cohesive work together. And we've been able to do that. I think some of that competitive advantage shows up in our 21st Century Learning Conferences. We're connecting kids to professionals. It's shown up in the way that we're rethinking our leadership structure, doing away with our department chair meetings and replacing them with lead learner meetings, where now any teacher and any student in the school can show up monthly and lend their voice and help to lead the work that we're doing. I think it shows up also food for thought, the transparency of the Nipmuck program. I'm not gonna go through all of those because we've been sitting at meetings and we've had a chance to catch up on the work that we're doing, but we've embraced the spirit of working, learning, listening, and figuring things out together. And it's beginning to show up in programs that are unique to Nipmuck that we've been really happy to share with our colleagues.
Another tenet of the last strategic plan as well was instructional excellence. And John talked about this a little bit before, about kind of having the license to do things a little differently. So we spent the last five years kind of really digging in and looking at the classroom in some ways in a traditional sense, in other ways in a non-traditional sense, but building programming for our students within the structures that we have. So within that, we've added over 36 electives. A lot of those electives come out of student interests or student needs. Anything from patterns of crime and justice to internships and special education. We've increased access to advanced placement courses, as well as increased the number of advanced placement courses being offered to students, as well as increased achievement through all of that, through that growth there. We've implemented the one-to-one program, so that is, we are actually going into our fifth year at Nipmuck, hard to believe, of one-to-one, but really established that vision around communicate, collaborate, innovate, which has driven that programming, and we're kind of excited to see where the next step of that journey is. Supporting all learners through co-teaching. We now have 10 co-taught classes at Nipmuck Regional High School where we have a special educator paired with a regular educator, meeting the needs of all students in those classes. And then really, the implementation of the 21st Century Learning Expectations, which is going to morph in this next strategic plan into the Portrait of the Graduate. So looking at what those competencies were, finding a way to measure those and measure success, and we've been doing that over the course of the last seven years, and again, that will transition into Portrait of the Graduate.
Another one of the pillars of the plan was the idea of educator growth and development. And this was another area where we took the strengths of the staff, worked with them, and trying to find actionable ways to support everyone's growth and development, from creating a model SMART goals, which align directly with district and school initiatives as a way to make tangible progress on a monthly basis through teachers' goals, providing access points for them to figure out how they can make an impact on the goals. Beyond that, things like the Nipmuck Teachers Leading Teachers Catalog. We really believe that every teacher in this building has some awesomeness to share, has something that they do that if they shared it, their colleagues would benefit from. And so we've created over the course of three years now, a digital catalog of best practices. That's a website that can be searched by the teacher evaluation framework or by things like student engagement or technology integration, creating access through technology to every teacher's strength in this school and hopefully promoting professional collaboration. The idea of providing PD in the school, we've been offering our RE3 series, I think, two years now, where we're bringing in educators from across Massachusetts, in some cases, New England, to work directly with us, learn from our teachers about the work that's taking place here at Nipmuck. Last year, having a teacher present on her work with 20 time, well, two district administrators, embracing this idea that we're a de-privatizing practice, we're sharing what we do, and we're becoming hopefully a central school in the conversation about what's new and different and exciting about education.
And then finally, community collaboration and outreach, which, as we talked about earlier, is a key part of the plan moving forward as well, bringing the community in. But we've done some key things. Is setting up some structures in order to find ways to bring the community in. So initially, we had our STEM Advisory Board in 2013 when we kicked off our STEM Scholars Program. That morphed into our STEM and Humanities Advisory Program and really bringing community members to help kind of be the word of the professionals to bring to us what our kids needed, the aunt Nipmuck, because they were the experts in their field and partnering with them. And has now morphed into the Nipmuck Community Advisory Board and really kind of spanning it beyond STEM and Humanities, but meeting the needs of all kids, figuring out how we can partner with professionals, how we can partner with those community members to bring them into our school, but also to get our students out of school and put them in career shadow opportunities or bring them for internships, or we bring professionals in for DECA to be able to give them feedback about their presentations as well. Every year now, we have the Nipmuck Showcase, which is an opportunity to bring our community in. It's often for incoming students, so we get our seventh and eighth grade students and families, but really showcasing the learning that's happening here. That wasn't something we were doing previously. It was John and I standing in front of parents, talking about it, but to be able to show the things that are happening here, to have our students here, to have our teachers here, really welcomes the community in. We've developed lobby and coffee hours, which are just formal opportunities to be engaging with our students and our teachers more regularly, getting their feedback, getting their opinions, providing an open platform. And then community partnerships. We've had the opportunity through 21st Century Learning Conferences, financial literacy fairs, wellness weeks, to bring in over 200 community partners to work with our students and to provide programming for them that's so meaningful, starts to connect the work that they're doing in their classes with the work that's happening beyond our schools, which is critical. Great. So a lot of this work is, and John and I believe in the power of professional sharing, not only to highlight the work that's going on in Mendon and Upton, because there's some pretty amazing things happening in these two towns, and we are two small towns. Often, people don't even know where Mendon and Upton are, but also we know we're better together. We know that if we're reaching out to these other school communities and tapping on them to learn from them, that we can bring those ideas back to our school community as well. So some of the things we've engaged in, this spring, John and I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC two times to the US Department of Education as one of six schools to present to a community of learners, but also to the Department of Ed staff in regards to reimagining a student's school day. So we had the great fortune to that. We recently received membership in 2015 to the National Consortium of Secondary STEM Schools for our STEM Scholars Program and the work that we were doing around that. Last year, we had the opportunity to go to EduCon, which is a conference, a national conference held in Philadelphia every year through the Science Leadership Academy as well to share, but also to take some ideas back from the Science Leadership Academy, some innovative ideas that they were doing, top 500 schools by Newsweek, as well as regularly presenting to NIASC Model Showcase of Schools.
Some of the other ways this has shown up, early on was the honor roll from AP, getting that established, the commended school by the Department of Ed. Mary Ann and I work along with Dave Quinn and Maureen Cohen with the Inspired Learning Project, which is sort of our passion project, holding monthly digital conversations with educators who are interested in reimagining school and building this network of people in the state and beyond to hopefully continue this momentum. And we're really excited. We received an invitation just a couple of weeks ago, one of 25 schools to head off to High Tech High in San Diego in order to showcase how we're reimagining things. I think some of this has come through the work that we've done with other schools. What's exciting for me is seeing that the ideas in Inspire are showing up other places, having the chance to chair the committee to rewrite NIASC standards for the 600-plus schools in New England. You see a lot of talk about agency, a lot of talk about students' passion, students being leaders of their learning. And I think in that way, Nipmuck is in a lot of ways, and Mendon and Upton are becoming ambassadors of this new important change that we're making in our schools. And so we've spent time thinking about the traditional role of a school administrator and a principal and challenge that, realizing that management is important, efficiencies are important, productivity is important, but the job description can be much more aspirational than that. And so we've thought about ways through a partnership that we could bring that aspirational version of the job description to life. I won't go through the whole job description for you, but we do have some impacts that we think will show up right away in NIPMUC's shift.
Great. So we, we tried to look at, you know, immediate impact. So we're talking 2018, 19. We realized we have a five-year strategic plan ahead of us, which is really exciting. But some of the ways, thinking about instructional leadership, really personalizing the educator evaluation process for teachers, spending more time with our teachers and in our classrooms, leading that, and the sharing of resources. So doing more professional sharing with our teachers of the resources that we're bringing from other school communities, as well as getting our teachers out more frequently, and then providing more professional development within our building as well. So not just the RE3 PD, but also specific PD related to some of the strategic objectives. Expanded communication, having a team to really tell the stories of learning that are happening at Nipmuck. I don't think that you can ever do that enough, share the incredible work that's happening within Nipmuck. I know that we're constantly doing it, you know, within our community and beyond our community, but I do think there's other social media platforms that we can implement and kind of tell the stories like you were talking about, John, of bringing the strategic plan to life. What does it look like? What is our progress? And then what is our measure of success? And what is that going to look like? And the expansion of our community partnerships. John and I feel strongly that our kids need to be engaging in real work that matters. And the key people to do that with our kids, with our educators, are our community members and professional partners. So to continue to expand the community advisory board, but also those partnerships with community members. So the idea of a community partnership projects, where we're creating a bank of projects where our kids can be giving back to the community, it's finding needs within the community that our students can serve. Our kids have a lot of skills that could serve our community well and really kind of maximizing the community's needs with our learners' needs and partnering those for really powerful learning moments during the student's high school career. And then shared decision-making. As John mentioned earlier, we bring very different perspectives to the table, I think. And, you know, with the new strategic plan, there's not, there's no easy work in that plan. I think there's some really tough work ahead of us, and I look forward to, you know, those partnerships to really have a collaborative process and all of that. Vision. We spent the last year at Nipmuck Regional High School establishing kind of our school vision, digging into our beliefs as a Nipmuck community, what do we believe about learning? Our definition of learning, what is learning and what is not as educators. We should have a common definition of what learning is. We spent a lot, long time digging into that and then thinking about our core values and who we want to be. So that work has just begun over the course of the last year, and we have a lot of work to do with that, as is the district's strategic plan that we're digging in this year. As a Nipmuck community, we're really digging into those Nipmuck beliefs as well. So working together to establish those visions and then talking about how to make those actionable. And then the continuity of leadership, obviously. You know, John and I have been a team for seven years. We're entering our eighth year, and we know that the work that we're doing isn't work that can take place in a singular year or two years, that that long-term vision is critically important in order to realize that success.
We've covered some of this already, so I won't be redundant. I would just say that this is different work that's being undertaken by a lot of districts, and it's uncommon work that I think calls for an uncommon leadership. We, I think, are able, we're spending the year talking with our faculty, but I think through our partnership, have the ability to take ideas and make them actionable, and just really excited about the years to come through the partnership. We recognize that this is a new model. We've researched it, it exists in other places, but it's not overwhelmingly common. And so we've also spent a lot of time thinking about how are we gonna make this understandable for our community so that it doesn't create confusion, but strengthens us, and we have just two quick slides on that.
Great. So we had created a slide to put out to the community because there are things that the community would need to access and then internally, as our teachers, they would need to access as well. So just kind of a division of managerial responsibilities per se, and we related them as primary contact information because we feel strongly that there shouldn't be just one person doing one singular part of the job, but rather a contact person and a primary person responsible so that we can collaboratively lead. So we talked about the division of the classes, 2019 and 2021 with Student Support Services, including school counseling, concerns about attendance, whatever that looked like, as well as special education being given to John, where I would have 2022. And as those, we'd loop with those students, so those relationships would be built not only with the students, but with the families and an understanding of those student needs. And then as a class graduated, a new class would be taken by that principal. And then supervision and evaluation would be split, standardized testing, we'd split those responsibilities. Again, those are more management responsibilities, and then thinking about program support. There are some with asterisks next to them, meaning there would be a joint approval process with many of those pieces, including budget, fundraising, things we felt like we both needed to be making decisions on, where other ones could be more easily delineated to one person or another. For example, building and grounds, John, whereas food services would kind of go under my purview. So we tried to separate those, so there would be a clear understanding with faculty and staff, but also with students and also with parents, so they knew who they should be reaching out to in order to get the help they needed. But understanding that any concern or issue or that landed in the main office, either of us would be able to handle.
Any phone call that comes, we're gonna pick it up. We're not gonna be saying, oh, you really need to go talk to Mary Ann. We're gonna do the same with faculty whenever questions come. This is not meant to be overtly. However, we do feel it's important to have this delineation of responsibilities. Beyond that, when we think about the roles, we also recognize this puts a burden on us to make sure that we are communicating extremely efficiently, regularly, so that if a faculty member comes to me, I don't say, let me go check with Mary Ann and get back to you in two days. In order for this to work, we need to be committed to the efficiency and the productivity. I think it only comes with seven years of working together and already having some of those routines built in where we know how we can work and function together. This is not intended to have the responsibility and to lessen my workload. And I think in bringing this up, I think, I think it's a unique request for a principal to come forward and make this request to have shared leadership. I'm doing it, recognizing and taking on some roles that I had eight years ago when I was an assistant principal, but I believe in it. I'm doing it because I believe in it, because I think the model is a powerful one. The work is challenging, but doable and inspiring, and I think it requires additional opportunities to have leaders contributing to that vision. We couldn't have a better one than Mary Ann. So we're sorry we took a little longer than we intended to on a hot night, but we wanted to be sure we were as comprehensive as possible.
That, that last chart made it a no-brainer. So when, you know, honestly speaking, I thought it was a little bit wishy-washy until you put up that chart. So I, honestly, I would have, I would have agreed to it anyway because I know both of you and you're very high quality. very high-quality individuals. And we do have a huge amount of work in front of us for the next five years. So I knew there would be a delineation of responsibilities at some point, but this makes me feel a lot better that I've already been thinking about that. It's better to have some sort of responsibility for an area or a domain so that you can at least, you know, help, we can help you, you know, evaluate your activities in that domain instead of sitting back and saying, well, it's both of, you know, the issue is both of your funds or, or.
It's her fault.
Or, you know.
It'll be her.
And I've been in situations like this in corporate, and they don't work. But this is a vastly different situation with, you know, a lot of strategic objectives we had to accomplish and I both think, a lot of both of you. So, yeah, I think this is a great plan.
I think it's a great plan as well. I think it's a very good example of SEI to the both of you because in order to maintain your own satisfaction in your professional goals and in your personal lives with relation to your job, it's providing you the opportunity to take your field where you feel you need to take it and for us to have faith that you're going to do what needs to be done, which you have set perfect examples in the past of.
Excellent, thank you.
So are there any financial ramifications of a change like this? I mean, I feel like we'd be remiss as school committee members if we didn't bring this up.
Absolutely. Yes, they are, but they are very modest. At this time, there is a deficit, I should say a delta or a differential of approximately $17,000 in the salaries between the two positions. The game plan would be, you know, I fully believe that as co-principals, the salaries should be equal. However, they would be equalized over a period of two years, Diane, for the simple reason that right now, John and Mary Ann have different work years as principal and associate principal. Seeing that we're not acting on this until August 27th, Mary Ann has already expended some of her vacation time, some of her additional vacation time that she has above and beyond John's contract. So the mindset would be to, over a period of two years, bring them up to the same salary to make up that $17,000 deficit over, or delta, I should say, over two years, but also to make their work year contracts commensurate as well.
Okay. And I just want to add in too that I so have such great faith in the two of you. Where our district, or I should say where NIPMUC has come from five years ago to today is just tremendous. And I just love the passion that you have for the plan, last plan, this plan, and just the energy that you have towards achieving some of our new goals because I do think that they're lofty. I agree with you so wholeheartedly, but there's nothing more than I want than for these goals to be realized. So, and I think you guys feel the same, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm in total agreement. It works because of the two of you.
Right.
Let's be honest.
Yeah.
The reality is, we've probably all seen many examples, whether it's in corporate or public life, where this kind of model doesn't really work. It doesn't work because you're really pitting two people against each other to compete for the job at the end. And so communication fails, agendas fail, alignment fails, all of that fails. But the reality is, the two of you have shown your ability to work together, you share a common vision, you share common goals, you share great communication. If it wasn't the two of you, to be honest, I would not be supporting it.
It would be different.
So it would be a different conversation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments, questions, anything else we need to discuss? All right. We need a motion to approve the new high school administrative structure of grade principals.
Motion to approve the new high school administrative structure going forward as of 2018.
It's starting with this current school year, starting on Wednesday. Yep.
All right, any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There are none, it passes unanimously, congratulations.
Thanks.
To say this, but speaking for both of us, we just feel so supported, so excited, and we didn't put a slide about it, but there's very special leadership in this district. And the fact that you'd be open to embracing this new model, we appreciate it. The fact that Joe has been able to be here for seven years, create a vision, coalesce a community around it, get energy behind it, and get us to a spot where we're poised for some really awesome things. Thankful for your leadership as well. Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it.
All right, so I believe next we will be moving up to superintendent comments.
Sure. Yeah, just very briefly, you know, per our policy JFBB, which is our school committee policy on school choice, we have two points throughout the school year where we have a public declaration of our school choice openings. If you recall, the two benchmarks are both May and August. So just for the sake of public reporting, we only have, after all the scheduling and taking a look at some shifts in enrollment, we only have two openings for Wednesday, one in kindergarten at Clough and one in grade five at Mesco Hill. And that's it. So I've had a conversation with Jan Gallagher and Jen Mannion that if it is necessary to conduct a lottery for those openings. Okay. Second, you have in your packet a slide deck that was shared a week ago today by Governor Baker, who met with a group of both superintendents and police chiefs at Burlington High School. And you might have caught it, it definitely got a lot of press attention right in mid-July when they finalized the FY19 state budget, that Governor Baker has put forward a $72 million safety initiative to really kind of direct student and school safety by providing funds for both the, you know, physical security of school facilities, but also the growing mental health needs of students. So as I put down, really, some of the key points of that $72 million include $20 million in grant funds, a one-to-one match for security equipment, things like security cameras and the like. Really, the biggest chunk is $40 million for funding for K-12 public schools, for social workers and mental health staffing. $2 million in funding to support the Say Something program, which is part of the CND Hook Promise program, specifically funding for training and resources for implementation. And then $5 million in training resources for SROs or school resource officers, school administrators, and other first responders. I think at this point in time, keep in mind that the legislature has not approved this proposal. The word that I'm hearing is when they do reconvene, it'll be one of the first items of business that they will be taking on. I think the question for us right now, unfortunately, I don't have the details, they haven't been shared with superintendents, but that key piece around the $40 million for mental health staffing, it's not known how that's going to be dispersed. Some of the speculation is they are going to use the Chapter 70 funding formula and look at district enrollment and needs and so on as a benchmark, but right now, it hasn't been determined. So it's our hope that optimistically, these funds will be dispersed before the holidays, but I will keep you posted on that.
Question, Joe? Do we actually have programs we would apply these fundings and funds against or, because we don't know really the detail about dispersment or the requirements around the use of funds?
No, we don't. I think, first off, I think, you know, Jay's going to talk about some of our summer projects. I can see those first three bullet points where we definitely would be trying to access funding. First off, some of the money that we've put up this summer to upgrade our security camera systems, specifically here at NIPMUC, you know, we would go for reimbursement funds for that. I think with regard to the biggest chunk there, I could, realistically, $40 million throughout the state is not a lot of money, but I think we would be looking at something like BCBAs, you know, Applied Behavior Specialists, particularly to work at the elementary level because at this point in time, with regard to SEL, that is our greatest need. So I would really be leaning on Jan and Deb along with Dennis Todd to really target some specific needs there. And then last but not least, regardless of funding, we are going to put plans in place to implement Say Something anyway. You know, we've reached out to our partners at Lilbury High School to get the ball rolling on that. So I see, I think we'll be involved in some way, shape, or form, but again, like you said, Phil, we don't have a lot of the specifics yet of how it's going to be dispersed. And then kind of speaking of things at the state level, we, since May, we've had a brand-new commissioner, Commissioner Jeff Swirely, who previously served as the state-appointed receiver of the Lawrence Public Schools. I actually incorporated him in my opening day presentation to the staff because he's really, his messaging has been very, very positive and actually, quite frankly, a stark contrast from his predecessor, the late Mitchell Chester. So I received a notification from his chief of staff that he is implementing, he's referring to it as a listening tour, where he is looking to meet, come into districts in two to three hour spans, meet with teachers, meet with kids, and kind of get a sense firsthand of what's happening within our district. So what was initially proposed to me was, I believe, either September 18th or September 19th, which doesn't work for two reasons. One, I'll be in Spain, but, you know, I said to him, look, you know, we've got a terrific assistant superintendent and so on, but that also falls in line with our green ribbon school award ceremony in Washington. So right now, myself and the chief of staff are looking to reschedule that for later in the fall, and I will keep you posted. And then last but not least, you do have in your packet the very first FY19 year-to-date report. Jay, I know it's very, very early, but is there anything specific that you want to highlight? I mean, we have an editing snowstorm.
Boy, the obligatory, right now, our snow and ice accounts are pretty stable. They're rock solid. I think this week we should be safe. No, it's very early in the year, so it was just, quite honestly, the FY19 budget was solidified last Friday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have administrators' comments. Jay Byer goes out with this for year 2018.
All right, you all, I think, have some basic information on FY18. The first one is just straight out of the software balance sheet, which shows all of our liabilities and assets. But if you go to the document, it's called FY18 Closeout, the initial top page is sort of a summary. Of revenue and expenditures, I know, by the way, we've saved the most enjoyable part of the meeting for the end, because we won't talk about money. All in all, after using school choice and offsetting it, we ended up with what would be a negative balance of about $59,000, but that doesn't count the fact that we have to apply E and D to it because there isn't really an application of E and D, you just use it. So the reality is, once we do that and also move that MSBA stabilization money front, which is going to be in E and D from last year, we will have a negative balance of 396,850. We appropriated $400,000 from E and D, so we're basically about $4,000 above total for the year. That does count applying $460,000 of school choice funds against last year's budget. We had appropriated $700,000, so we left out about $260,000, and you'll see where a lot of that money went as we get a little bit further down to it. I've also provided you with an E and D analysis. Now, E and D is sort of a generator, it's a product of the Department of Revenue, but not actually a real account in our books. The real account in our books is called an undesignated fund balance, which will finish with $1,493,000. From that, they'll take out $400,000 that we've appropriated for FY18. We will also take out of that the 337,880 that we're appropriating from last year. And the DOR gives us what they call HITS, but when they look at our books at the end of the year, if we pay our health insurance bill that's due July 1, and we pay it in June, we transfer that expense to July once the year starts, but they take it out of E and D. I don't know why, but their attitude is you spent it in FY18, so we're going to take it out of E and D. It doesn't really come off the books, okay? And we also have some grant accounts that we apply for money in June, but don't get the money till July, so as of June 30th, we had a negative balance in a couple of grant accounts until the money came in July. So I'm estimating that our E and D will probably get certified at around $500,000 next year. That's not a terrible thing in that the reality is, there's probably going to be about 1.1 million in undesignated fund balance, which we'll, we have access to utilize as we go forward. Does that make sense? It's a little complicated.
I think the one thing that you've got, and you've done this numerous, numerous times, is knowing that E and D is really, for all intents and purposes, an artificial designation that's given by DOR, and really the undesignated fund balance is the reality of accessible funds, correct?
Correct. That is the critical number. So as I said, we finished as of, we finished, actually, there's a typo on this, we finished as of June 30th, 2018, with $1,493,000 as an undesignated fund balance, but we have appropriated out of that toward FY19, so it's going to be less than that. The next thing to look at is the school choice account. So quickly, before. So the 1.1 is inclusive of the 491. Basically, everything minus the appropriation. Yes, yes. School choice account, we finished with about $1,683,000 in that account. That's after applying $460,000 to the FY18 budget. We're going to end up appropriating into FY19, $812,000, with the original appropriation with $700,000. We're going to actually appropriate another $112,000 more, and I'll go into some detail, I think, in a minute about what's causing that. So that will bring that account down to about $870,000, but I also anticipate, I'll go through the summer projects in a second, but once you take those out, we're down to about $668,000, but I anticipate a growth of about $500,000 at a minimum this year. So we should be back to about 1.1, 1.2 million in that account for next year. Now, when I said we appropriated 460 out of school choice to last year's budget, that's because I kept money aside to use for some of these summer projects because we can't pay out of last year's money, so rather than just transfer it over, we just save it and use it for this instead. Summer projects that we did, so we went around the district and we tried to identify some, you know, things that need to be repaired. The big one, I know I talked to you guys back in May, I think, about the air conditioning system for the auditorium, which we anticipated at that time would be around 100, or around 60,000. We ended up issuing an RFP for it because we were getting quotes all over the place. The quotes ranged from $99,400 as the low quote to $140,000 as the high quote. We went with the $99,400. I rounded it up to $100,000 on this sheet. It should be installed hopefully by, probably November, just about the time we need the heat, so time is everything. But think of all the electricity we're saving by not running it now, so there's always an offset. So there's always an offset. We'll all be paying the price tomorrow on the auditorium. If you all know Misco Hill at all, you know that there used to be a set of, like, wood treads built into the dirt that went up to the softball field from the parking lot. They had deteriorated dramatically over the last three or four years. They were probably put in maybe 12 years ago. We chose to replace those with permanent concrete steps with handrails that actually won't have to be replaced again. There was a cost of about $15,000 for it, but we felt it was a worthwhile investment in improving the quality of that area there. We did install a well on the irrigation system here at NITMOC on the football field. The original quote was $7,500. We anticipated that would actually escalate to around $20,000. When it was all said and done, as of today, the bill we have is about $32,000, and we still anticipate some other costs for electricity and some piping to connect everything together. The reason for the escalation is that we had to go 700 feet to find a suitable quantity of water to run the system. When you do that, you have to put in, instead of a one-and-a-half horsepower pump, a 10-horsepower pump, which added another $6,000 or $7,000 to that cost. So before you know it, it costs way more than we actually anticipated, but again, the well, original well, was 12 feet deep and really had no water in it. So this is a more permanent solution for that. We do have three other wells, I believe, at NITMOC that have similar issues. Unfortunately, I don't see us doing another well anytime soon, but at least this corrects that one there. Joe alluded to security cameras at NITMOC. The camera system here was not working, the DVR system wasn't working. Again, we got quotes anywhere from $20,000 up to $60,000. We went with the $20,000 quote with somebody we've worked with quite a bit in the past. The cameras are in, I believe they're running. There may be one or two left to install, but we've got views around the entire perimeter of the building and in the building and in the hallways, so it's a much more comprehensive system all the way around. If there's money available through state grant, we'll apply for some reimbursement, but we also need to do some upgrading at Clough Memorial and Misco, so maybe we'd want to look at something like that as well, that's to be seen. I listed here the Clough Field. So we haven't really spent a lot of this yet, but if you know the Clough Field, there's a fence along divides the property of the houses on North Avenue and the field, and it's overgrown with poison ivy and weeds and trees, and there's a backstop out in the woods that's probably from 1940, that's really not good, and we would like to, like, sort of take it all out, but it has to go in stages. So the $5,000 would be to do some tree work and potentially remove that fence and all of the growth in there, and then we'll kind of see where it goes from there, but right now, we're having difficulty getting quotes, getting in there, and now false occupancy isn't started, so ultimately, it would be great to get that out, replace the fence, and surround the entire field with a fence, but that's probably about a $25,000 job all in all, so it's not on the radar, but it's something that we're considering keeping in mind. The water treatment. DEP came out and did an analysis of the whole system and told us we needed to upgrade a lot of the equipment. We had some pipes that had corroded over time, they were replaced with PVC pipes. A company called Whitewater, which is a water treatment and testing company, came in and did a lot of the work. They just finished it maybe yesterday or the day before, the water was off for two or three days up there. There's still a few other steps. There's, it's a very, very complex water treatment system there, and a lot of the stuff just needed to be upgraded, because it was old and antiquated. So that cost is around $20,000, but all told, so that's about $202,000 worth of projects, if you add all that up, which is the other offset from the $460 we applied to last year's budget. Still leaves a little bit left, which is a good thing. All right? So that is that. If we want to talk about changes in FY19 that kind of pushed that additional choice money to it, I did prepare a sheet for that, and apparently, now that I'm looking at it, I listed the changes in revenue twice, so that was hopefully so we would get the money twice, but we didn't. But the biggest expense that we had that hit our budget is we had planned within the certified budget back in March, hopefully, a reduction of a couple of staff people in various places due to enrollment decreasing. Turns out, enrollment didn't decrease, it increased, so those positions were not able to be eliminated.
To be specific, it was 2.4 FTEs, and one of the FTEs, if you recall, and I think you were included in a series of emails of some concerned Upton parents, was the fact that we had a migration, or actually, kind of this crazy little enrollment bump of last year's kindergarten, this incoming first-grade class, where I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you started with maybe like 22 or 23 per class, and by the end of the year, it was upwards of 26, 27. So as a result, we did add one section of first grade to Memorial for this current school year.
We also had an increase in some costs for some care professionals, mostly because the IEP's written for these students required additional support, and we needed the staffing. One of the big things that hit us, although it's not, it's only, I shouldn't say that, but it's $19,000, is we have a variety of students that go to Norfolk Aggie, and we do a collaborative bus with about eight districts to take them there on one bus. In the past, there's been about 58 to 60 kids, which is crowded for high school kids, but we were able to pull it off. Number went to 71. They had to add a second bus. You can't put 71 high school kids on a bus that only holds 77, because that's designed to three for a seat.
Are we required to pay for transportation?
Yes, we are. We're required by law to transport them to the school. SEL curriculum, part of our Excel research we did was that an area needed to be addressed with social-emotional learning. We purchased a program called Second Step for the elementary school in grade five, and some licenses for a digital access for grade six through eight. So that was at a cost that we didn't really anticipate in March, it was around $16,000, but again, I think it's an important thing that we spend some money on. And then our summer program for special education, the cost went up about $20,000. The real reason for that, the costs themselves did not increase by $20,000, but I used to always have money left in the 240 IDEA grant, and I could apply that to salaries and reduce what we had to pay out of the operational budget. We no longer have that, and the grant expires June 30th, so I can't apply the summer salaries to last year's grant anymore. So I had to add that in as well. So it adds up to about the same as what you see our revenue increasing. It's about $350,000 either way. All right? And then beyond that, I think that pretty much covers it. I've got some motions. Is there any questions before I go away from this? Does all this make sense? I know it's a lot of numbers, and sometimes I go fast, because I understand them, and I don't always explain them as well as I should.
We discussed the bathroom.
Oh, the bathroom, okay. So, yeah, I forgot about that. So the bathrooms at Misco. So as of the time I sent this out, which was, I think, Friday morning or Thursday afternoon, we were anticipating, I figured, you know, maybe it'd be $40,000, so I just threw a number out there, but we hadn't really accounted for it. We got our first quote back Friday afternoon about 4 o'clock. It was $75,000, which, quite honestly, in my view, is a non-starter for one bathroom. But when I looked through the quote, some of the things in there just, I mean, just really got me kind of irritated and just seemed outrageous. I mean, the part of the quote was replacing the door going into the bathroom with $9,000, which means it's a door made of gold, in my opinion. So we are trying to research some other options. This was a company that was going to do everything. They were going to sub it out, handle all the plumbing, the electrical, the floors, the ceiling, everything, the wall, the demo, the whole thing. So we either have to sub it ourselves, we have to be our own general contractor and hire different firms, or today I reached out to BBT to see if this was possibly a project that they'd be willing to take on with their various schools, and the answer I got back is they were going to look into it and let me know. We're going to have to keep looking at it. What I would tell you is, yes, we do want to try to do something to improve the quality of the bathrooms there. I think we need to start with just one, but it's probably not going to happen in the next two months. It's probably going to be, I would say, we'll be lucky to have it done by the end of the school year, and maybe that it's a summer project next year. But we need to research this and do it right. I don't want to just spend $60,000 or $70,000, find out we don't get the results we want. So I'd rather take our time with that. It was kind of the same with the air conditioning. Initially, I thought, eh, just get a company, go put the air conditioning in. As it went on and on, it turned out we had to write an RFP. We had to do a lot of research. I actually contacted a mechanical engineering firm to write an RFP, because I don't have the expertise. They wanted $10,000 just to do that, which just adds more to the cost. The same with this. In order, if the cost is over $35,000, it has to go out the bid. We can't just hire different people to do it. We need to research this a lot more, so we're still working on that. So unfortunately, it's going to take some time, but that's kind of where it's at with the bathrooms. Any other questions? Not the best news. Now, the motions I have for you, the budget has increased by, you know, a specific amount, so we need to recertify the budget. The state aid is increasing mostly because our Chapter 70 went up by a very small amount. Transportation went up by a decent amount. Our choice charter school reimbursement actually went down by about $5,000, so we have to re-appropriate those. We need to make an appropriation from school choice, and then the appropriation from E and D is last year's MSBA reimbursement and this year's reimbursement into our stabilization account, which has been established. It currently has $1 in it. We'd like to put all of this money into it, because it will be for capital projects down the road. So those are the motions that we need to approve tonight to get our bid budget solidified. And with that, I'm done. And I'm sorry I gave you more than 30 seconds, but I tried.
You did your best, Joe.
I was on time, but Joe.
You were.
All right. So we need the motions to recertify the fiscal year 2019 budget. If anyone wants a motion to add on. Just give it to me, second.
Okay. I make a motion to set the operational budget for the Mendon Upton Regional School District for the 2018-19 fiscal year at $35,352,268. That consists of general operations within the levy limit of $34,458,818, and debt service outside the levy limit of $893,400.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close of day. Motion carries unanimously. Second motion, please.
I make a motion to appropriate $13,507,422 from state aid that consists of the following. First, chapter 70 funds of $12,382,726. Regional transportation reimbursement of $1,119,338. And lastly, charter school tuition reimbursement of $5,358.
Second.
All right. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close of day. Motion carries unanimously. Third motion, please.
I make a motion to appropriate $812,462 from the school choice revolving account.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close of day. Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. And the final motion.
I make a motion to appropriate $675,760 to the Mersey Capital Stabilization Account from E and D appropriation of $337,880, and the FY2019 MSBA revenue account, $337,880.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close of day. Okay. The motion carries unanimously, and the fiscal year 2019 fiscal budget is recertified.
All right. If I could just add a couple other things. First, it's important to note that the town's assessments does not change at all from the assessment in March. This is all basically an increase due to state revenue and district funds. But secondly, I think that as much as we have a million positive things going on, unless we get an infusion of state aid going forward, I think we're going to have some challenges on the funding side of things. I mean, even with state aid here, it's a 1.7% increase in state aid, which is really not a lot. It's still basically $20, or it's $30 per student now in Chapter 70.
Yeah, the Chapter 70 increase was between the governor's budget, that came out of the legislature, was $10 per kid?
Right. The total Chapter 70.
$10 additional dollars per kid, yeah.
It went from 20 to 30.
Exactly.
Our total Chapter 70 increase is a half a percent. The increase that we got in state aid was transportation, which is great, but it's always an inconsistent number. But as long as we continue to have to rely on the communities to fund us, because the state isn't there, I don't anticipate we're going to get anything different next year unless they implement some of the foundation budget review recommendations, which they're saying they're going to do. I went to a workshop a month ago, and they said, yes, those things are coming, but I'm of the belief, until I actually see it, it doesn't matter. So I do think we have to be cautious about how we handle funds, you know, which we always are, but I think it's a concern that we have to look at as we go forward.
So in light of that, are we going to look at probably projections over the next two to three years and the budget commitment?
Absolutely. I think that's got to be, that's got to be our key piece of work. Usually, you know, when we have our first meeting come October.
Well, I think, you know, people are going to ask a lot of questions about, we have a lot of great things that need to be done in here, and how are we going to fund those key items? I know some of them are maybe, you know, there's, I'll call it, shifts that can occur. So as we start to implement something, the funding will go from maybe one kind of focus area to another, but it will be important to start to lay that groundwork out over the next two to three years.
I'm also thinking something like, if there's a way that we could classify some of the things we're proposing into urgency, you know, must have within a certain timeframe, and then, you know, want but don't need, some classification like that, so we can start to prioritize things? Because I feel like I'm looking at this budget brand-new every time I've seen it. You know, I'm familiar with the projects, that's the only reason why I know what's going on, but it feels like we should have some sort of sense of priority as we go through time.
Right. Well, so there's two pieces to it. You have to keep in mind, there's the operational budget, which is that general ledger report that you have, and that's basically the instructional practices of the district. And there's obviously a maintenance budget and all of that, but there's also this capital side, and the capital side, in some cases, can be overwhelming, and there's probably going to have to be some type of capital bond down the road, once we come up with a plan. And we started that process earlier in the summer. We're going to continue that, but I think there's two pieces to it. One is the operational side, and one is the capital side, and they're separate, but they're linked.
Yes, understood. But we're, it's okay, so just the projects that we accomplished over the summer, those came out of operational?
Those came out of operational, in essence, by not applying choice last year and using it towards these projects.
So it would be helpful to understand the relative priority of these projects versus others on that type of list.
I think unfortunately, too, if you look at that list of projects, you know, I think unfortunately, we're in a reactive mode rather than proactive mode, you know, approximately half of that is, okay, your compressor blew, therefore, you got to replace it. If you don't do anything with the well, then you're basically, come September, you're going to have a front field of straw.
But we already got a backfield of straw.
Yeah.
So, I mean, but like, the well, believe it or not, is a small amount, even though it was $36,000. The air conditioner was unanticipated, and that's a biggie. Quite honestly, what I think about when I see that is we've got three more units in this building that are exactly the same as the one that just went out with the same age. Well, we can't do all four of them, and then we've got similar air conditioning units at Memorial and Clough and Misco, but those are bigger-scale projects. So, you know, we tend to tackle the little things at the end of each year, you know, the things that, you know. Another thing we did, but we actually did it within the operational budget, was at Misco, at the bottom of that parking lot, that turnaround, there was a fence there that was just covered with poison ivy and growth and all that stuff. We got in there with a backhoe and just ripped the whole thing out, straightened the post, put a new fence in there, and cleaned it all up, so that actually, kids don't get poison ivy anymore. We thought that was a good thing, but it wasn't, you know, that was a few thousand dollars. So we try to get the little things, but the big things are a different story.
You have to have a plan.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, even just talking about the cost of one bathroom.
Yeah, though that's a.
And bathrooms are a huge issue.
I know they are.
And I think the plan has to be a prioritized package of what we critically need, okay? And, you know, again, we've got the bathroom issue, which I see as, you know, super, super high on the list, but then think about, you know, educationally, what we want for our kids, that, you know, again, Misco with no science labs or facilities. Think about what we're trying to accomplish, you know, again, going back to our strategic plan with regard to maker education and project-based learning, what that space potentially looks like and so on. So I think we've got to be very thoughtful and deliberate, and I think Jay completely nails it when he says, you know, it's going to have to be packaged for some type of bond to go before our communities, because right now, I think we've done an admirable job, but this is very much a piecemeal approach of saying, okay, what do we have left over from one fiscal year to another fiscal year, and what can we patch in? And again, they're great projects, but they're very small in scale. They're very modest.
But it will all work out. It all works out in the end. It's the dark green shirt motto.
That's right. That's right. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move on to correspondence. Next, we move on to correspondence. In your packet tonight, there was a thank you letter from.
Yeah, it's a thank you letter from Jimmy Grant that I wrote on behalf of both myself and the school committee, just thanking him. Every year, he, he has a golf tournament in the spring, and he's been consistent over the last seven, eight years in donating $4,000 to the regional school district to promote athletics and to promote our wellness program. So I think very well-deserving, you know, in the bigger picture, I think this year, he raised a record amount, approximately $7,000, because he also gives to Mendon Upton basketball, you know, youth softball and so on, so very commendable. So thanks to Jimmy for the good work.
Yes, you're here. I agree with that. He's been, he's been giving out things to the community as well, and it's very, very well-appreciated.